Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, July 27, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. If you haven't already done so, please take a moment to silence any devices you might have. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you Chair Badami. Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair Badami.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Erickson as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process with verbal and written comments. To speak on any item tonight, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. If you haven't already done so, please be sure to turn the card over to staff seated to my right. Matters relating to agenda items will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not on the agenda will be heard under verbal communications. We have desk items this evening for items number two and number three. Have commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence? Yes. Does anyone need more time? No. We have a requested continuance this evening for item number four. Do I have a motion to continue? Vice Chair Kane?
I'll move.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Hudes?
Second.
So, I will be recusing myself from the vote due to a perceived conflict of interest with one of the appellant's. So I will now call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members also serve on various town subcommittees. Do commissioners have any reports to share from recent committee meetings? Vice Chair Kane?
The Historic Preservation Committee met today. Commissioner Tom O'Donnell and I were present. Subjects included 57 Hernandez Avenue requesting a demolition. That was approved. And 125 Tate Avenue in the Almond Grove District, also a contributor to the historic nature of that district, that was not approved, but after much discussion with the applicant and the architect, was sent back for revision. 122 Whitney Avenue, request to demolish a single-family residence. This was a pre-1941 house, which defines it as historic. It was not a contributor, it was not in a historic district, and the request to demolish was approved, provided they saved the really big tree in the front. 94 Hernandez was previously heard in December, in January, in April. It's a complicated project at 94 Hernandez, and we gave guidance to the applicant, and that matter's been continued to a date certain. Do we have a date yet on that, Mr. Paulson?
It was a date uncertain, and we do not have a date. We will wait for a response from the applicant.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kane. At this time, members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on tonight's agenda. I don't have any speaker cards, so if anybody would like to speak to us tonight, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I will move to item number one, which is a consent item, and that's approval of the minutes for the meeting date of June 22, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Hanson?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second, Commissioner Birch?
I'll second that.
I was recused from item number seven due to a perceived conflict of interest. So after viewing the hearing online, I can attest to the accuracy of the minutes. So I will now call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Our first public hearing tonight is item number two, which is 165 Happy Acres Road, Architecture and Site Application S-15-060, Conditional Use Permit Application U-15-011. Requesting approval to construct a detached garage, a caretaker residence, and approval of a conditional use permit for a caretaker residence on property zoned HR-2 1/2, APN-537-24-014. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Vice Chair Kane?
When I visited the site, I met with the property owner. The contact was incidental contact.
Thank you. Ms. Walters, I understand you're providing us with the staff report this evening?
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners. The subject, 3 1/2 acre hillside property, is located on the north side of Happy Acres Road. The property contains a single-family home with an attached two-car garage and a one-acre vineyard. The vineyard was approved through a conditional use permit in 2010. The applicant proposes to construct a 640 square-foot detached garage at the west end of the existing driveway. The detached garage would be utilized to house additional cars and vineyard equipment. Additionally, the applicant is requesting to construct a 631 square-foot caretaker residence located within the existing terrace landscape area of the property above the pool area. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a caretaker's residence for exclusive use of a person or persons for maintenance of the vineyard and overall property. The project complies with the hillside development standards for caretaker units. The applicant has submitted a letter of justification found in Exhibit 5. The proposed buildings are architecturally compatible with the main house, including colors and materials. The proposed 5,921 square foot of countable floor area is less than the maximum allowable floor area of 6,000 square feet. The project meets the hillside design standards and guidelines specifically with regards to grading, maximum cut and fill, and building location. The project also meets zoning standards with regards to building height and setbacks. The applicant has reached out to their neighbors, and there's been provided letters of support, which you can find in Exhibit 9, and also tonight's desk item includes another letter of support. This concludes staff report. We're happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Questions of staff? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for the report, and the staff report as well. I just wanted to clarify that I understood this correctly. There was actually three parts of this property that qualify for seller, but only one of them can be counted. So is that stated in our seller policy that there can be a maximum of one seller?
That's correct. The town's seller policy allows one seller to be counted on-site. There is qualifying seller area in the two accessory structure buildings, however, only the one in the main house is being discounted with regards to the maximum allowable floor area.
And I noticed that was also part of the garage, so the 400 square feet also comes off, so the difference between the total square feet and the 400 is what came off for being a seller, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Related to that, just a question. I noticed in the terms and conditions of approval that they would need to do a geotechnical review, and I just wondered, because we've seen other applications where they had to do it at the time of approval or prior to approval. So since they are building into the hillside, wouldn't it be more normal for them to do that now? I mean, as long as it gets done and it's done satisfactorily, I'm sure it's fine, but I just was trying to understand how the process worked.
So in this case, and unfortunately Parks and Public Works staff wasn't able to join us this evening, otherwise they could answer that directly. But many times with homes, there is some form of geotech investigation done prior to the approval. These being two accessory structures, I imagine they don't have any large concerns, they just want to get extra clarification, so they added this condition that that be done prior to building permit issuance.
Right, so as long as they aren't able to build, and as long as the discovery's been done, so I thought it was covered.
Correct.
All right, so back to Commissioner Hanson's question about the seller. If you could clarify for me on page five, the chart about the area that counts towards the floor area, and I'm looking at the very last column, and that's in regards to the detached garage/seller. So I see the proposed square feet at 640, so we take off 400 for the garage, so that leaves 240. So how do we get the 516 that counts toward the floor area? Can you just kind of walk me through that?
Sure, and this is a little bit more complicated because of the different structures. So the main structure has a garage, and so the main structure's garage, I have it here, it counts as 276 square feet. So that 276 is taken from the allowable 400 square feet, and then you have 124 square feet left. And so we apply that 124 square feet to the detached garage. So it equals, they're discounting a total of 400 square feet, period.
Okay, and back to the seller policy where you're allowed, one, and any additional sellers, you have to count the square footage. When we talk about garages, you could have several garages. Actually, if you have a really big hillside lot, you could conceivably have 10 detached garages at 400 square feet and have a total of 4,000 square feet of bulk and mass that would not count?
So you're only allowed to count the 400 for the whole site, so it's just a one-time 400?
Okay, I guess I'm confused, because when I look at this chart, there's the attached garage/seller at 767 square feet, and I thought we were taking 400 off of that one, and then you have the other detached garage.
So maybe we can clarify a little bit. Of the attached garage, only 276 square feet of that is being counted towards the 400 that is allowed per the hillside development standards and guidelines. That's because there is an even larger number that is seller, and so that's where the delta of the 130 or 124 square feet from the detached structure is being taken and added to give them the credit for the 400 square feet for garage that's permitted. So if they, in your scenario, if they had a bunch of garages that were 400 square feet, anything after the first one would count as FAR towards the house in the hillside development standards and guidelines.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Any further questions? Commissioner Erickson?
So, if in fact the caretaker's residence were approved and constructed, would it count toward the housing production in the general plan housing element, and would it also count toward an affordable category?
So it will not be deed restricted, so it will not be able to be put in an affordable category. Housing element, I can't recall whether or not, we don't have very many caretaker's units that have been approved. At least since I've been here, I can only recall probably three or four, but we can look into that as to whether or not we get credit for a housing unit. So we should get credit for a housing unit, but it probably, it will not be deed restricted, so it will not go into an affordable category.
Thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
You made a comment about the materials will match the existing houses. Since we don't have a color board, is that going to be somewhere in the conditions of approval that the materials and the colors will match the main house?
It will, and it's specified on the elevations in the approved, in the development plans.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about the CUP on page seven of the staff report. First of all, is it necessary to comply with all four of those findings under F?
Yes.
And then maybe you could walk me through, it sounds like there is a CUP already on that property in 2010 on the vineyard. With regard to point one, the proposed use of the property is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. First part of that is, was, how did that work in the 2010 CUP, and is that the same rationale that's being given for this CUP request?
We don't have the findings from the 2010 CUP, but the findings have not changed, so they would have had to make a similar finding just for the vineyard. I understand probably the challenge is the term "public" in there. Clearly, this is a private residence, so it won't be a public benefit.
So how do we deal with that if that's a requirement for a CUP?
If you don't think you can make that finding based on previous applications, staff tried to take their interpretation of it, and then you don't have to agree with that, but staff uses, will be supporting the property even though it's not a public convenience or welfare.
Okay, this is my first one, so I'm just kind of looking for some background on how CUPs are granted where we're essentially doing with a private property issue.
And I think the other point could be if the commission doesn't believe that's applicable because it is specifically public convenience, and this is not there, then I would look to the town attorney to see if that would be possible to not have to necessarily include that. I can't recall a situation where we haven't included it, but that doesn't mean that we necessarily can't. So let's hear from Mr. Schultz.
So there certainly is ways to make that fine if the Planning Commission desires. I mean, one, you could call it a stretch if you want to, but by having a caretaker on there, you've reduced possibility of traffic that the maintenance worker would have to come and maybe with trucks or whatever other equipment to maintain the vineyard, which would reduce the traffic count. It also, as said earlier, provides another housing unit, which helps us with our housing element. So there are ways that you can make that finding a public convenience if you need to, but it is, maybe not a stretch, but at least it's easy also to be able to find that there is no public convenience also. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I had a question related to that for the CUP. Supposing at some point in the future that the applicant sells their property, I know the CUP runs with the land, so supposing the new owners didn't desire to have the vineyard or have a caretaker for the vineyard, what do they have to go through to change that?
We don't have any history of that happening, so I couldn't give you a real solid answer. The question gets to be if that use is terminated, and someone calls us, we're clearly not going to be going out to the site every year, or five years, or 10 years to check on that. There are options, I think Ms. Walters and I discussed earlier, and if there is concern about down the line, potentially a deed restriction could be placed on the property that it has to be used as a caretaker's residence. If the caretaker's residence is no longer needed because there's no longer a vineyard or the maintenance of the property is no longer a necessity, then generally what would happen is they would have to remove the kitchen facilities from that structure because secondary dwelling units are not permitted in the hillside, so that is an option.
Any further questions? Vice Chair Kane?
Going back to the chair's question on sellers, I don't follow the table either. Maybe we could go over that slower. In the resolution, the 2002 167, there's a memo following that dated October 2004. It's in the policy extension of the original 2002, it says, "A seller shall not exceed beyond the footprint," blah, and then it gets to say, "One seller is permitted per Additional sellers," so I guess it's not "one seller," is, "one seller is allowed the favorable treatment on the FAR, and the other sellers shall be included in the floor area calculation." But in looking at your table, you seem to have reduced the square footage for the second seller. What am I missing?
If it'd be helpful, I have a more detailed sheet that I can show up ahead. I can do, put that up and walk you through all the numbers, because it is a bit confusing.
Okay.
The countable attic counts, it's the 900 for the main house. The existing main floor counts towards that countable floor area. The existing upper level counts, and then below grade you have the attached seller/garage. So a portion of that garage area is counted as seller, and you can see that number is the 491. And so the delta of that is the 276. So we've taken, you're allowed to have a 400 square-foot garage on your property. You take the 276 from the main house, and you have leftover 124. So we applied that to the detached garage. So in this case, this is a little more clear, and with regard to the main house, you have 491 square feet of seller, 276 square feet of garage, and that gives you why we're not counting anything in that portion, and that gives you this total. For the caretaker's garage, you have seller, but it's countable, and then non-seller, but that's all countable. So we're taking the whole 631 square feet of the caretaker's, that's all included in that calculation. And over in the detached garage, you have a portion that's seller, and you have a portion of the, again, the leftover uncountable garage. So in this case, you have the 120 square feet exempt. In this case, again, you still are counting all of the seller square footage on both detached units. Only the main house is allowed to deduct from that seller square footage. So that's how we arrive at that number at the bottom.
Commissioner Hanson?
So just to make sure I got this, so basically the second garage is borrowing garage square footage that they couldn't use up on the primary garage?
That is correct.
Okay, it's not in the seller policy per se? Because I was trying to figure out where in the hillside guidelines, the 400 is related to the garage?
That's correct.
The leftover from the garage, not the seller. Now, just one more question. The 491 square feet of the first garage, the attached garage, where did that number come from? Is that the amount that's not four feet above grade?
We're looking at the detached garage?
The attached garage.
Oh, the attached garage?
Yeah, because it's, right now, it's, what, 700? I forget the number, but why, yeah, where does this 491 come from?
Sure, so that is the seller. So if you look at the garage and our criteria for what a seller is, underneath that house there is 491.
So it's the part that's not, that's actually underground, and the rest is exposed?
Is not qualified.
It's above grade, yeah.
I just, I think the confusion is that we don't have a 491 anywhere on our tables, I don't think, so it's hard to follow along, but that's pretty clear.
So let me just clarify then. It's a one-story garage, but the garage coexists as a seller, so you might be walking in your garage and maybe get out of your car and move two feet over and maybe tell your spouse, "Oh, I'm in the seller now."
Yes.
It's one in the same.
It is, based on the definition of seller in our policy.
Okay, okay, but that definition in the seller policy, it does say that a seller cannot extend more than four feet above the existing or finished grade in any location. So does that do that here?
It meets the definition of the policy. So the area that we're counting that is not seller, that does not meet the seller policy. So this amount here, and this amount, this amount as well, these do not qualify as our seller definition.
And I'll just add some clarification. So it's, staff's interpretation has been, ever since the seller policy has been in place, to count seller this way. I understand there's some concern or issues with that. We are running through some of those questions now with the policy committee, and we'll be coming forward with some additional language, but currently that's staff's interpretation, and that's how we've interpreted it on all applications.
All right, so that's your interpretation?
Correct.
Any further questions from commissioners? Vice Chair Kane?
Commissioner Hanson mentioned earlier the wisdom with a question about having a seismic study, geological study done after we give approval, and I was wondering about that. The caretaker unit is on a slope of about 30 degrees, 29 point something, and when I was visiting the site, there was a separation in the pavement. It was marbled pavement, and they had separated. And so I'm thinking, well, I don't know why they're separating. I know the slope is pretty steep, and I'll read, there are 73 conditions of approval to this application, and I didn't see a seismic study. I saw soils and geographic something or other. Soils engineer, construction, observation, soil recommendations, soil review, geology and soils. Do we need a seismic review of any kind on a property situation like this?
That will be determined with that Condition 41, geology and soils mitigation measure.
So their preliminary indication would tell us whether or not we need to go any further?
Correct. Should that soils investigation or geotechnical investigation show that one or both of these structures can't be put there because there's, for instance, a fault rupture or something that's found subsurface, then the buildings won't be permitted to be built.
Is there mitigation to that? Can something be done, drive the piles deeper?
That would be up to a geotechnical engineer.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. I will now open the public testimony portion of the hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the commission. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Albert Kirkshibasha. I'm the property owner of 165 Happy Acres Road, and this is Chris Swalding, the architect. My wife Julie and I are fortunate to live in Los Gatos. My wife is a pediatrician here, is part owner of a large pediatric group. I have two kids who go to Fisher Middle School and Los Gatos High. We're very extremely fortunate to be living at 165 Happy Acres Road. It is a very beautiful lot. It's secluded in the Los Gatos Hill, but yet quite close to town. The property can only be seen from adjacent neighbor properties. It has a private driveway, like a football field, that leads up to the developed portion of the property, and the existing structure as well as the developed structure are not visible from the public roads. We purchased the property in 2008. At that time, it had not been maintained very well by the previous owners. We have put a lot of effort into this property to improve and modernize it. Some of the things we have done is updated the interior, painted the exterior, built a 50-kilowatt solar array to take care of all our electrical needs, modernized the pool with more efficient, quieter running pumps, replastered the pool to make sure there are no leaks, installed a solar water heating system, and we did many things around the So regarding the vineyard, after struggling several years of weed whacking the crass on the hillside, the brushes, the weeds, the thistles, and literally it takes two people a full week with an electric weed whacker out there. And if you live in the hillside, springtime, late springtime, you hear all the motorized gas weed whacker every weekend, one property here, one property there. We decided that it might be a good idea to plant a vineyard, so it would enhance the property as well as the neighboring properties, and also help maintain the hillside for us. And here are some pictures. The vineyard is about four and a half years old. It's thriving. You can see the grapes. Planted some owl boxes, built some owl boxes, and can actually see owl nesting in there. So it takes a lot of work to maintain this property and the vineyard. The vineyard is partially maintained by Coastal Range Vineyards, a professional maintenance company, and by ourselves. My wife and I are literally spending the bulk of our time, weekends and weekdays, in the yard, maintaining the property. Also, recently I accepted a new position at work, requiring significant travel time is also reducing my time I can spend at the property. Although we both enjoy working in the yard, we're also growing older, and working on the hillside, that angle is hard labor. So we're requesting that we can add a small cottage for caretaker that can help maintain the vineyard as well as the property. With that, a garage to house his car, the caretaker's car. With that, a garage to houses his car, the caretaker's car. My kids are driving, so there's an extra car there and as well as maintenance equipment for the vineyard. We just simply like our property to be clean. We'd like to park our cars in the garage, keep all the material inside rather than outside the property. I've asked Chris to incorporate both the cottage and the garage adjacent to the existing developed structure to reduce the infrastructure pathways, concrete pathways. The garage is integrated into the wall to give it unity with the entire structure rather than having separate structures scattered around the property. And the cottage is built into the hillside to reduce its bulk. And before I hand it over to Chris, who can elaborate a little bit more on the design aspect, I'd like to mention that we have contacted all the neighbors. We have received favorable feedback from them. One neighbor has not responded and we believe that the neighbor that is mostly affected is the Donnellys, who have a direct line of sight to the cottage. With that, I'd like to also acknowledge Aaron Walters, who has done a diligent job with this project and also helped me on several other things regarding the vineyard. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Chris Spalding, architect, 801 Camilla Street in Berkeley. Before I run out of time, we were required to do a geotechnical study and a geologic report. Those have been done. They've been peer reviewed by the towns consulting geologists and consulting geotech. There's nothing, they've, in their reports and in the peer review, there's nothing geologically unstable or geotechnically unstable where these two buildings would go. So they, they cleared it safety-wise for construction. So as far as the cellar issue, I think, I think the town should say there's a 400 square foot garage credit. Might make it easier for people to understand. So when, when you deduct the cellar, the one cellar that we get to deduct from the main house garage, there was less than 400 square feet of that credit for the detached garage, so that remainder of the credit is allowed to be used for the detached garage. And the, the cellars that are in the caretaker's unit and the detached garage, we have to count them as square footage even though they are tucked in the hillside and they don't add to the mass and bulk of the buildings. So it's, allowing us to do that isn't completely consistent with the goals of hillside standards and guidelines to try to hide the bulk and mass. So even though we had to count it as square footage. And then in terms of architecture, I mean, these are pretty simple little buildings. Caretaker's cottage is just a, I mean, they're both simple rectangles. The garage, we have a flat top on it so that we could expand the, the pool patio because this, you've been up there, you saw that their patio area is pretty limited because of the slope. So while also getting garage, they get some additional outdoor living space. So are there any other questions?
Vice Chair Kane?
The geotech report, did you consider sending that in as an exhibit or a letter or a desk item?
I'm, I'm surprised it's not included in the package because it's all been completed. Should have been.
Is that something that you would deem not necessary for us?
We typically don't attach it to staff reports and we do have a copy of the geotech report in, in the file. Apologize, the condition of approval was included and shouldn't have been included.
Okay. I'm only asking this time because it's a very steep slope, 30 degrees, and I saw separation on the concrete pathway. So I thought I'd look, you know, get a report before it falls down.
It's normally required and it was here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I had a question about the CUP. I think I need to ask the applicant.
Yeah.
So I, thinking about this caretaker, although it's not a land use issue per se, we're layering the CUP on the existing CUP for the vineyard itself. So my question was, does this caretaker been identified? Because I, I know there's only a handful of companies that, that do vineyards, because we actually looked into it for our own property at one point. And, and so then trying to find this person that actually knows enough about it and stuff, I mean, it, it, it doesn't affect the decision, but I, it, it, since we're putting this all together as a package, I wanted to know where, where this was going.
I have not identified a caretaker yet. So I first have to kind of build the thing and then see who's out there who can do, who is willing to do so. Also, I'd like to add that it's partially going to still be taken care by the maintenance company and then some stuff is going to be transferred to the caretaker as well.
And you have other parts of the?
One, one person cannot do the entire vineyard themselves.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hudes, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Kirchthubasha, I wanted to ask about the CUP and the finding number one that we need to make, that the property, proposed use of the property is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. I assume that you were involved in the CUP in 2010?
Yes.
Could you maybe tell us what that rationale was relative to that finding and whether it's the same one that we're to apply to tonight's application?
I don't think there was a, for the original CUP, I don't think there was any requirement to enhance the property. It was a straightforward application, I think, to just plant anything more than 300 square foot.
Do, do you have an opinion about the way the vineyard serves the public convenience or welfare?
Yeah. First of all, it reduces the noise, weed whacking by a week's worth. It enhances the property values as well as the neighborhood property values. I'll be willing to share some of the wine with the Los Gatos public.
Oh, that's sold, approved. No, just kidding. Vice Chair Kane has a question for, if you're done, Commissioner Hudes. Okay.
Maybe this will help. Essential or desirable, you read my mind, what kind of grapes are they?
They're Cabernet Sauvignon.
Well, there you go. All right.
All right, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I read the letters of your neighbors and it appears that this, your, your vineyard is helpful to your neighbors in the sense that it is visually pleasing and the care of it, I take it, is necessary, otherwise we go back to the, the whacking of weeds. So I don't have to look too hard to find some public benefit, but I just wanted to confirm that with you. Your neighbors are happy with the vineyard and they're happy with your maintenance of vineyard and you're concerned that that maintenance continue even though you can't devote the same amount of time.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would say that's a happy neighborhood on Happy Acres Drive. Any further questions? Seeing none. Architect, Mr. Spalding, could you please fill out a speaker card for us before we leave? Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, yes. I will now invite comments from the members of the public. So I see with someone coming forward, it must be Peter Donnelly?
That would be me.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name's Peter Donnelly and I'm here with my wife Julie in support of the application being made by Albert and Julie Kirchthubasha. We live at 15305 Sioux View Drive, which you actually can see in one of those pictures, with a property immediately behind the Kirchthubasha residence. Our home is in an elevated position, so we have direct line of sight to both their home and their property. I believe we're the only property in the neighborhood that can actually see their house without going to the edge of their property and peering down. So we, from our house, we look directly out onto the valley and, and Albert and Julie's house. When it comes to the development of their property, I think our family is most impacted by any development and I'd appreciate you taking our input into consideration as you look at this application. Since purchasing the property, that's eight years, shocking, isn't it? I said a number of years ago, I didn't know how many, but eight years ago, Albert and Julie have put in a tremendous amount of effort to, to their house, whether it be updating the house, putting in landscaping, the surrounding area and the vineyards. I can attest to the weed whacking. I have, I had 15 and a half acres directly behind. I have four and a half acres now. I remember Commissioner Kane and Commissioner O'Donnell when I did my application a number of years prior to that. It, it's a real pain to, to do that. It's a steep slope, the weeds come back every year, actually twice a year, surprisingly. So the vineyard has been an absolute blessing. It's beautiful to see, but I see Albert and Julie out there all the time, handpicking weeds between the things, fixing the watering system, et cetera. They've always consulted us when it came to any development on their property. We were part of the discussions around the vineyard, around drainage issues, fencing, deer fencing, whatever. And we've always provided our input and it's always been taken in a constructive manner. And nothing's different to this application. We provided input, that input was incorporated, and we're happy with what's being proposed. We think it's a minimal request and I, I think, I think we should move forward. I, I understand they've also worked fairly diligently with the planning department, which I'm familiar with, Joel. So, and I know that it takes a lot of time and effort to do, so I think they should get, you know, encouragement for that. And frankly speaking, the, the method that they've used is what the town encourages, which is work with your neighbors, come up with a collaborative approach. We all want to see the hillsides protected, but we also want to have property owners the right to develop their property in a reasonable fashion. I respectfully request that you approve the proposal in front of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Any questions for Mr. Donnelly? Seeing none, thanks again. All right. Any further comments from members of the public? Seeing no one. I will invite the applicant and his architect back to the podium for five minutes to add any further comments about the application, should you desire. No? Okay. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant and the architect? Seeing none. All right. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Do commissioners have any questions, comments, or a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell has his hand up.
I have a motion. I would move the approval of the request with a proposed finding that it is categorically exempt pursuant to section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act, as mentioned in exhibit two. The required findings for granting a conditional use permit, which we've discussed and are more particularly set forth in page 7F, and I believe the one that was causing some effort or some difficulty was the proposed use of the property. I, I would read that in this case to be desirable, the public convenience or welfare. I think we've had testimony on that. The findings of the project comply with the hillside development standards and guidelines as further set forth in exhibit two. The finding, finding that the project complies with the hillside specific plan, see also exhibit two. The required considerations under section 292150 of the town code for granting architectural and site approval, again, exhibit two. Approve the architectural and site application S-15-060 with the conditions contained in exhibit three and the development plans in exhibit 10. Approve the conditional use permit application U-15011 with the conditions contained in exhibit three. That would be the motion.
Vice Chair Kane had his hand up next.
I love to listen to you make a motion. It's really, I'd like to second that motion, please.
All right, do I have, I have a motion to approve and a second? Do I have discussion? Commissioner Erickson?
I just have a comment for the staff. I don't want to burden this application with what I'm going to say next, but I would encourage the staff to look at the language that we've used in the housing element, where we use secondary dwelling unit and, and, and see if we can incorporate in some way appropriately caretaker residences so that they are, so it's not questionable whether they can be counted as part of the housing production. And also, my sense is that in most instances, the caretaker residence, depending upon what the individual, the size of a caretaker residence will probably would be, if it were, if it were to be rented, would probably be in the category of affordable housing. So if there's a way that we could nuance the language of the town's policies so that it could apply in both cases, that'd be terrific.
Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to make a comment. I, I, I had my concerns answered, but I, I do wish that the, the geotechnical information had been available, especially since the study had, was done in our packet, you know, to help decide that. But I was comforted to hear, to see in the terms and conditions that it would have at least been taken care of afterwards, but it looks like it was before. Having said that, I, I thought it was a really well-done application on, on the part of the applicant and his architect, and I'm really happy to see that you reached out to all the neighbors to get all of their support and approval. And that's a great way to do these kinds of things.
I would also add that you have terrific neighbors, they all support you. However, just for the record, I would just like to make the comment that even though I'll be supporting the motion, I don't agree with staff's interpretation of the definition of a cellar coexisting together as they do. So, that being said, any other comments? I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are appeal rights, thank you. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you. All right. We are moving to item number three, which is 16362 Hylo Road, Architecture and Site Application S-16-011. Consider an appeal of a decision of the Development Review Committee approving an architecture and site application to construct a new single-family residence on property zoned R-18, APN 532-042-082. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Seeing none. Mr. Paulson, I understand you will be providing us with a staff report this evening?
I will provide a brief staff report. There's not much to add above and beyond what is in the written staff report, but generally this is a parcel that's currently vacant. There was a home on it prior to it being vacant, which was granted approval to be demolished within the county. The applicant submitted an application and the application went to three DRC hearings. At the first two DRC hearings, the matter was continued and at the third hearing, it was ultimately approved. Over that time, the applicant tried to work with the neighbors in an effort to address the concerns that were raised, which were buried. And ultimately, at the final hearing, the adjacent neighbor, the Wagners, the, the neighbors, came and spoke and had mentioned that they felt that their concerns were adequately addressed with the changes. Subsequent to that, the, an appeal was filed and generally that is outlined in exhibit 15. All of the relevant reasons for why the appeal was filed are in the staff report. Generally, there was concerns with the cellar and also with neighborhood compatibility issues with mass, size, two stories, the existing neighborhood that's out there. And the appellate is also obviously here and she will be presenting and I will be passing out a hard copy of the PowerPoint that she'll be going through. Additionally, the applicant has provided some photos that I will also pass out at the same time. After addressing the concerns and at the final hearing, the Development Review Committee determined that the, as was originally the case at the first hearing, that the application is consistent with the residential design guidelines, is consistent with the neighborhood, there's a two-story house adjacent, directly adjacent to this property, and determined that the application was in compliance with all other applicable requirements and therefore approved the application as stated previously. Therefore, as recommended in the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission deny the appeal and approve the architecture and site application as set forth in the staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation and we're here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Questions? Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Birch? Oh, you did not have your hand, okay. Followed by Vice Chair Kane. So go ahead, Commissioner Hanson.
My question, the first question I had on this. My question, the first question I had on this, did I misread the application, or is this not, would this not be the largest house in the neighborhood?
It will not be the largest house in the neighborhood, from a square footage standpoint. The neighbor, the property adjacent to it is 3,584 square feet, so it is larger in square footage.
I'm looking at the combination of the house and the garage, and the, on page five of the staff report, it says 4411, house and garage, and I don't see anything smaller than that.
Yeah, we, we provide that information for, for the planning commission's consideration. We don't take that into consideration when we're looking at it. We look in, purely at the square footage for the house and the garage separately. And again, we look at the immediate neighborhood as one component, as defined in the residential design guidelines, but there are also other homes in the immediate area, not in the defined immediate neighborhood, that have far in excess of both house, and there are some garages that are similarly sized.
Okay, but yet, it is among one of the very largest houses in the neighborhood if it does get approved. I'm, I'm just wondering why, why this didn't come to the planning commission, when, when we've seen other applications where it's one of the largest houses in the neighborhood? I was kind of curious about that, and why it had to come to appeal, you know, that, that a resident would have had to pay for.
Because staff determined?
When it's, it's very much on the high end of the neighborhood. This isn't even talking about the, the seller, this is just the, the two-story house.
Yeah, after staff's objective review of the application in light of the existing policies and guidelines and code, staff determined that it was compliant with the residential design guidelines and the code.
Oh, right.
And so that's why staff didn't forward it to the planning commission. If it was the largest house in the neighborhood, that probably would have automatically triggered it. Staff would have brought that forward, which is typically what you see. The other typical scenario is, if there were no two stories in the immediate neighborhood, we would have brought that forward too. That's pretty typical protocol from, from staff.
Confirm that house that's next door is in the county, so do we consider county property that's not subject to the Town of Los Gatos residential design guidelines?
We consider county, that's the immediate neighborhood. So, if we use that marker, then there'd be no immediate neighborhood in this scenario.
Right. Commissioner Hudes.
What's the status of 16386, which I believe has similar square footage, the house, and similar and identical lot size?
Yeah, that is, that is true, and that is still intact, staff technical review. I believe they have installed story polls, but the, if I recall correctly, the item is scheduled for technical review again on August 10th, and so following that technical review, then a determination will be made as to whether or not that application needs to come before the planning commission, or whether that will be heard at the DRC.
Commissioner Hudes.
With regard to the story polls, I believe the, the height of the house was lowered. Do we, do we know if the story polls were lowered as well, or what I saw out there, is that accurate?
Well, let the applicant also speak to that, but what I understand from reading their materials is that these story polls have not been reduced, so that is at the original height when they went through, so it would be two feet lower than that, but I would look to the applicant to confirm that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Vice Chair Kane.
I believe this house was built in 1991. When, when we researched, because I'm interested in the annexation, do you know when this property was annexed by the town?
This property in question today?
Yes.
This year? So this house was not built in 1991, the original house was built well before that?
It was the house before that.
That's, it's the property before that, I think, is where you're recalling the 91.
I have the same concern that the chair does about the county's standards versus our standards, and we got ourselves in a crosshairs over, our residential design guidelines are much more specific than the county, which, which is, let me call it comparatively looser. When I did the 225 study on the houses, meaning if you're standing on the porch of the subject house, you look at the two houses to the left, the two houses to the right, the five houses on the other side of the street, everything is one-story, except for the county house. And I, I'm just trying to justify the preservation of a neighborhood, which is the purpose of the, of the provision, when I've got a situation with a double standard next door that might in the not-too-distant future get annexed, when and if and as appropriate. I don't want to be encumbered by that. You're saying it's something I have to live with?
As stated before, that's their immediate area, that's their immediate neighborhood. If you did not want to count or include county homes, no house in the immediate neighborhood is in the town, so then this one would be all by itself.
Well, I would reiterate then, that everything in the immediate neighborhood is a one-story, except for the one next door.
That is true.
Which is buried in trees and leaves and vines, and I didn't know there was a house there.
Yeah, it does have extensive vegetation, that is true.
Commissioner Hanson.
I had a question about the arborist report as well. If I understood this, and if I missed something, correct me. When this was, property was part of the county, the applicant was given approval to remove trees five and six, they gave them a tree removal permit.
Correct.
So, in reviewing this application, what I thought I saw in the arborist report was that she looked at the trees and she made a table, and it said, basically, she didn't even look at tree five and six, which were the ones that were proposed for removal, and, and she wrote a comment that tree removal permit obtained.
True.
So, we haven't even, we're basically accepting the county's review of the arborist situation, is, was my interpretation of that, because she didn't rate the trees, nor did she comment on the viability of saving them or anything else.
So the applicant's currently, I believe, proposing to save one of those trees, which is tree five. Tree six, they're still proposing to remove. The tree removal permit, and then again, I took this over a little bit later than midstream, so I don't have all of the extensive background with the previous tree removal permit, but I believe, and the applicant confirmed this, that actually the town issues the tree removal permit for this property. So, but I would look to the applicant to confirm that.
And, and what basis would?
I don't have the application in front of me of what he used for his determinations.
Okay.
But it is in our system.
Okay.
All right. So I have a question. The seller policy was included as an exhibit with item number two for Happy Acres Drive, but not with this hearing. So just confirm that we can borrow that exhibit and use it in our evaluation for this hearing.
Most definitely.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Actually, I'm glad you asked that question. I had a related question on process and procedure. In, in looking at the findings for approval, the, normally, we talk about the seller in the context of the general plan, and then there's also a, a resolution that the town, because the, the general plan mentions sellers, you know, using it in lieu of visible mass above ground. And then we also have the written seller policy of the town. In the conditions of approval, or, and the findings, there's nothing about the seller policy per se, so how does this 2,000-square-foot seller factor into our approvals if it's not part of the conditions or findings for approval?
Because you don't have a finding for the seller policy that you have to make.
Right.
So now that can be part of your deliberations, and you can determine that you think that maybe a seller shouldn't be permitted here, that's perfectly fine.
Under what, under what document, though, is it because it doesn't comply with the residential design guidelines, or it doesn't comply with the general plan, or what, under what, supposing that that's a direction that we went, what would be our finding?
Well, I could think of instances on any number of applications, including this one, where you could make one or all of those. So I would base it on typically seller policy. You know, we'll just give a little bit of background, you know, from staff's perspective, how we look at the seller policy, is we look at the house, the above-ground mass. This one happens to be one where the seller is completely below grade. So we look at the above-ground mass, excluding the seller, and make a determination as to whether or not that meets and is compatible with the existing neighborhood. So once we make that determination, if it happens to be compatible with the neighborhood, but they're close or at their FAR, we don't inform folks that they can not have a seller because they haven't reduced additionally the above-ground mass.
Understood. So, what I heard you say is that it's going to be considered as part of the compliance with residential design guidelines?
That is one option. You could also make a determination that you don't feel that it complies with the seller policy. So, you know, there, you can make any one of those, and so it's not necessarily a finding, it's really just justification for a decision if you decide to go that route.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation. Any further questions? Seeing none. I will open the public portion of the hearing and allow the appellant ten minutes to address the commission. And I assume that's Ms. Susick? Ten minutes? And I need a speaker card. You don't have to take the whole ten minutes if you don't want to.
Ms., I want to add to what the chair said. You get ten minutes to present, the applicant gets ten minutes to present, then we have a public portion of that for anyone who wants to speak on it, then the applicant gets five minutes to rebut whatever, and you get the final five minutes, if you want them or need them.
God, this is like the best day of my, okay. Shannon Susick, 16407 Shady View Lane, and how, my.
Ms. Susick, if you can grab the mic, if you're not going to stand next to it, and then it's the arrow that's pointing right, not the top one, see the one that points right? There you go.
Okay. So just to comment on one of what Commissioner Kane said, these are all homes right on Highlow Way, I put the addresses. They're all single-family. This is the one next door to it, that is not really visible from the street at all, or from behind on Shady View. Much wider setback because of the driveway. Unfortunately, my pictures are not that great.
Ms. Susick, could you hold on just a sec?
Yeah.
While we pass out your program?
Oh, yeah.
Then we can follow along with you.
I believe her clock is ticking, but I'm sure Joel Paulson will fix that.
Joel will justify the clock.
So all these quotes are taken from the residential design guidelines. Blend into the neighborhood rather than stand out. And I looked at the 252 rule as well, and they're all single-family, except for the one. And the guidelines are maximums, not goals. This is what Highlow Road looks like from Shannon to topping, right about at the corner of Shannon. This is looking the other direction to the north, to Shannon Court, which is all in this, in the town of Los Gatos. Those are all single-level homes. Arguments that I've heard is that, and this is from some of the residents or neighbors, well, okay, the, the, the structure that was demolished was rat-infested, it was horrible-looking, blah, 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 it was a rental, it was a disgrace. But for me, that's not, and for most of the residents of our town, I don't think that that's a good argument to support development, because that's what some of the residents said that lived by the old Honda dealership, that were in favor of Laurel Muse, Bluebird Lane, the thrash house, because yes, it was an eyesore. But I don't think that that's the way that we should plan our development, and not in this part of the county, where there's so many lots and homes that are similar. Also, the whole argument about it being an unincorporated county pocket. Boy, oh, boy, that's a tough one for me, because I'm on the county, I'm in the county, and half of our street is in the town. Have to look at each, every one of these applications as a whole, because this is a huge number of homes that are going to be developed. Here's some single-level homes that were built in the last ten years in the immediate neighborhood. Ah, sorry, it's so dark. These are on Highlow, across the street. These are on Shannon Road, this was a lot split, they have some basements. This is across the street. So I recommend the denial because of the bulk and mass, and the use of the seller policy, which is under review, is, is a misuse. It started out with 3,000 square feet and a 3,000-square-foot footprint, which would have made the house, including the basement or cellar, over 8,000 square feet. The design doesn't blend into the neighborhood, they're all single-family, single-level. Here's across the street again, this is a newer home. Now, this, I think, is pretty important, and that is that somewhere, some homes were constructed with little consideration to the neighborhood's architectural styles or characteristics. Others were remodeled with little sensitivity, and this applies a lot to the county pockets, because we, they don't have the residential guidelines that we do in the town. But these aberrations will not be considered when analyzing a neighborhood. So there are a few houses that stick out, that are two stories, that, and here's some of them. This happens to be next door to me, I got no story polls, I got no notice, the house was scraped, and this went up. Here's the plat map, and I delineated, I put the notes on the bottom, two-level, single-level, and the lines across the middle are where, that's where the first two-story homes start on Highlow, except for the one next to the subject. And those are all embraced by a huge grove of eucalyptus and other redwood trees, except for one where they've just recently cut down some trees. So, here's another one, two doors down, the pending application that you were looking at, that is noted on that chart as one of, as a large, it's pending, and they're, they are waiting, most likely, for this application to be developed. This is behind me. Also soon to be seen in these chambers, yes, 16466 Highlow Road, pending sale. Marketed as an incredible opportunity to build on over 11,000 square feet, and I understand that the person that just sold the house down the street from me, that built, remodeled, sold after two years, has the, is in contract for this one. Story polls have kind of faded. This is the house next door, the subject, it's single-level, fits into the neighborhood, it's 3,500 square feet, quite applicable. It's the same amount of square footage as what the applicant wants to do. So, just don't know what to do with this much time. So, my recommendation is to deny the current application for the reasons stated, and also my appeal that was submitted on the 15th. Also, I would like the town to consider, and I will bring it up to the town council, reviewing the residential design guidelines for Los Gatos for parcels under 15,000 square feet, as I believe the FAR ratios, the sellers, and the setbacks are being abused and maximized. The unincorporated pockets of this town are so many, and it's so much more that's available to develop than in the town, I think really needs to be looked at carefully, whether it's in the county, or they scrape it and it's in the town. And also, please note that some verbal and written comments came from parties with vested financial or other interests, waiting for this application to be approved so that the other houses can be approved. There's many excellent examples of single-level or single-level homes with basement that conform to the neighborhood. I would recommend a single-level home with a basement. The developer said he has some engineering that is fabulous for basement space. So I'd ask to please deny the current application, as it does not conform to the immediate neighborhood. It uses the seller in addition to the ma, the mass and bulk. It compromises the neighbor's privacy, the views of the hills, and to say nothing of the infrastructure, the roads, the schools, police services, garbage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Susick. Questions? Commissioner Erickson, followed by Commissioner Hanson.
So could you remind me of your address?
16407.
You might want to speak into the microphone, because we couldn't hear that.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. I lost it. 16407 Shady View Lane.
And is your property in the town limits or outside of the town?
I'm in the county.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for your report and the details in your appeal. You had a, a chart on the back of your appeal to the town that had a list of all the houses, not just the 225, but, but more in the surrounding area.
Yes.
You know, and whether or not they had basements, because that, I think part of where it, it seemed like your appeal was going is, was sort of like the combination of a two-story plus the basement, bulk and mass, you know, was, was, you know, over the top. So, if I heard you say, you, you had done some research in the, the house next door that is the largest house in the neighborhood, does have a basement underneath?
No, no, they don't have a basement.
Oh, they don't? But they have a single-story and they still? But they have a single story and they spread it out?
Yes.
Okay. And so you said in your appeal, though, that you... I mean, I'm sure it was hard to come up with the details, but out of the 37 or so houses on here, that only two or three have basement, cellar?
I think that there's three, to my knowledge, on Hilo that have basements, and two of them are partial basements. Or actually, all three are partial, I think. They're not a full footprint underneath.
Okay. We can ask staff that as well, but I did note that you had gone to the trouble of preparing this information.
Yeah, and so as long as you guys have that, because I brought copies of that as well.
Okay.
Any further questions for Ms. Susick? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Susick.
Thank you.
All right. I will now invite comments from the applicant and their team, and they also have 10 minutes to address the commission.
Planning Commissioners, my name is Doug Delcello. I am the legal counsel for Valley Jalalien. We also have... By the way, my address is 1 Bayview Avenue, number 11, in Los Gatos. I've been a proud resident of Los Gatos for over 20 years. With us today, we have the architect, Darrell Frazekis, as well as the real estate agent, Mike Brown. And both Mr. Brown and Mr. Jalalien spoke with the various agencies as well as the neighbors in getting this project approved. I want to compliment Mr. Paulson, who did a very thorough and meticulous report. And of course, the applicant wants you to accept the staff report's recommendation to deny the appeal and make the four specific findings delineated on page seven of the staff report. I don't want to repeat the contents of the staff report, except for a few items that go directly to Mr. Susick's comments. First off, the... Actually, I'd like to go to my letter that is dated July 13, 2016. It's, I believe it's Exhibit 16 to the staff report, pages 15 through 30. And you'll see at the bottom of page one, the immediately adjacent home, 16374 Hilo Road... I'm sorry, that's not the 16350 Hilo Road. It's a two-story home, approximately 3,000 square feet, surrounded by mature landscape and trees, and it reaches a maximum height in excess of 28 feet, which is obviously two feet below the maximum height of Mr. Jalalien's proposed house. If you go to page two of my letter, it indicates that there are 27 homes on Hilo Road, nine of which are two-story, with an average of 3,700 square feet. And on Shady View Lane, there are 30 homes, 13 of which are two-stories, with an average of 3,200 square feet. So I don't think by any calculation or determination, whether it's part of the city or town versus the county, if you look at the two streets that run parallel, there's no question that this two-story home, 26 feet in height, fits in with the neighborhood. It definitely will not stick out. Now, of interesting note, the home immediately adjacent, if you are facing Mrs. Susick's home, the home to the immediate right, as she pointed out, is very large. In fact, it is... Let me give you the address. It is 16395 Shady View Lane. It's a two-story home, 28 feet in height, square footage 4,206 square feet on a lot of 8,400 square feet. And of course, this subject lot is just shy of 12,000 square feet, so a much larger home to the immediate right of Ms. Susick's home as you face her home. Now, going back to the staff report, it does a good job of detailing the significant concessions made by the developer here, Mr. Jalalien, specifically on page... This application was approved by the town, June 7, 2016, with all agencies signing off. The consulting architect made three recommendations. They're found on page four. All of those were adopted and implemented by the developer. He then approached all of the immediate neighbors and made numerous concessions, seven to be exact. If you turn to page six of the staff report, all seven of those neighbor, immediate neighbor requests have been implemented. So those neighbors that are directly impacted seem to recognize the obvious, which is, how soon can you get it built? Because I know I'm going to make 100 grand or so. Every once in a while, it rises when these types of beautiful homes are built. Which gets us to, I think, the true agenda here of the appellant. If you look at the home immediately... One house to the right as you face, as you're on Hilo, facing basically her backyard, one house to the immediate right is the Hariri home. And if you go to my letter dated July 13, 2016, Exhibit C... I'm sorry, Exhibit B, you will see the beautiful renderings for the Hariri home, which is going to be one yard removed from the backyard of Ms. Susick. She wrote an email on July 3, 2016, to my client, indicating that she wanted to pursue this appeal with the planning commission to, quote, "Make sure that there was no impact and precedence to be set by this development." So you have a situation where this home, that's been approved by everyone, including the immediate neighbors, that is not the largest home on the block, so to speak, really isn't the issuer subject. The real issuer subject is the precedent that she's worried about setting for these other two projects that are much nearer in proximity to her immediate home. If you turn to Exhibit C of my report or letter, there are four-color photographs. Now, this brown fence depicted in the first photograph, this is the fence that is shared by the Susick backyard. So these photographs were taken from the other side of the fence, if you will. You can see on that first photograph how mature and large that tree is. This goes to the privacy and impact to the neighborhood and views. That's another one of her complaints in the appeal. If you go to the second photograph, you can see my client's story poles barely. And keep in mind that the story poles... Someone asked if the story poles had been reduced. They have not been. So these story poles that you see in the second photograph there are two feet higher than the actual maximum height of the home. So in photograph two, if you lower that two feet, I submit you'll barely be able to see the story poles, if at all, particularly when considering that the Ms. Susick's home is one-story. Third photograph shows the mature landscape again. There's no conceivable or possible privacy or view impact to the Susick home relating to this proposed development. The final photo is another angle of the story poles. Again, you can see how tall the trees are behind the story poles. It's not going to impact anyone's privacy or views, certainly not from Ms. Susick's home. And again, the immediate neighbors are encouraging this development. Is that the beep for 10 minutes?
You have 30 seconds left.
30 seconds. Okay, thank you. We have several neighbors here in support of the project, and obviously, myself, as well as the architect, will answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Delcello. I do have a question for you with your exhibit that you passed out to the commissioners, and that would be 3A, the photo of Ms. Susick's one-story residence with the two-story next door, which would be 16395 Shady View at 4,206 square feet. Do you have information if that home is in the county or within the town of Los Gatos?
The one on 1B there?
3A.
I don't have specific information. I believe that Ms. Susick said that it was part of county. I don't know one way or the other. I'm glad you brought that to my attention. I meant to mention that, but that photograph, 3A, depicts the home to the immediate right as you face the Susick home. And 1B depicts the brown shingled home to the immediate left as you face the subject development, which is of approximately the same square footage and two feet higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners? All right. I have a question, and it may be for the architect, which is part of the team.
Darrell Frazekis, architect.
Thank you. So when we look at our residential design guidelines, we do look at the immediate neighborhood, and we're looking at how many two-story homes, how many one-story homes. Did you, at any point in time, because you have a deep lot, consider just elongating the home as a one-story and taking advantage of the rear setback, which is pretty ample?
Yeah, no, ma'am. In general, what we do is we try to minimize the footprint in order to provide the owner with the maximum backyard and private area, the maximum area for landscaping. And if we covered twice the footprint, we would have twice the runoff. So what we try to do is keep the rainwater on site.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none. All right. I will now invite comments from members of the public. Our first speaker will be Deborah Wagner.
My name is Deborah Wagner, and my husband and I have lived at 16374...
Ms. Wagner, could you...
For about 25 years. And when I first met Mr. Jalalien, the first thing I said to him was, "I hope your plans don't involve a basement," because my point is related to the ground movement that we've experienced already with our patio dropping, cracks, and doors no longer closing because of land movement that's primarily on the north side. And then another concern, which I didn't exactly realize at the last meeting, was that even though he reduced his 3,000 square feet, I was told it was going to be 1,700 square feet. But with the 3,000 plus the 1,700 and the 900-square-foot lot, he's still up to 5,279 without a garage. And there's no way that that's not the largest house on the block. So in any case, going forward, for example, the property at 16350 Hilo, which you're talking about as a two-story, it's a total of 2958 square feet with an actual 300-square-foot wine cellar, which is exactly used for the storage of wine. It's not used for a living space. So going forward in the neighborhood with the continued development that we're going to be seeing, the basement consideration guidelines absolutely need to change. These are full-on living spaces, so by not including these underground living spaces in the square footage, the FAR is meaningless and subject to abuse. The uncounted living space in the neighborhood, with this uncounted living space, the neighborhood is forced to accept basically a duplex on a single property without proper designation. How can disregarding underground living space be seen as complying with the FAR? And it's not for storage. It's for actual living space. So this 3,479-square-foot house on the top, plus the 1,800 square feet on the bottom, that's a huge house. And if, just because you can't see the living space, that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So the FAR requirements were meant to protect neighborhoods from oversized houses. So not counting underground living spaces essentially denies that there's any impact and pretending that these consequences don't exist. So please take into consideration the recommendations shown on number five and how it affects the overhaul of neighborhood, because the policies absolutely need to change when you're considering basements. These are not sellers. Sellers are for storage of food. These are living spaces. So after we suffered through 25 years of rats, termites, weeds, and other aspects of property owners negligence on both sides of us, we now have an oversized dwelling with a bathroom looking with a... Someone looking into my bathroom, and then a monolith on the other side, which is cutting off all the light to our house.
Okay, Ms. Wagner. Five seconds to wrap it up. Your time is up.
Okay, yes. The newest house that was built in our area, which is right across the street, 16397, single-story, 3,300 square feet, and it's the newest house built on our street.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a question for you. Commissioner Birch?
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Yes, certainly. Go right ahead.
Being as you are the adjacent neighbor, I have a... You touched on a number of items in what you were speaking about that I wanted to ask you about. The first one, in your letter dated May 17, you did mention the water issues. Can you expand a little bit on what has been happening with the water runoff on your property?
Well, every house on our side of the street has a sump pump. And when our sump pump gets blocked, we have an absolute lake in the backyard. And we've been told that with the geological or whatever he's done, that he's ensured us that next door, they've got... It would be more solid than... The water table would be more solid than what we're experiencing with a flat backyard, but I don't know that. So there is a high-water table in our yard. Everyone on our side of the street has a sump pump, or else they have a lake in their backyard.
Did you have an opportunity with the applicant to take a look at the civil drawing with the...
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And I didn't realize until the story poles went up and that the windows are going to go right into my bathroom.
That would be my next question.
We've lived there for a long time, and I feel like we're the Bermuda Triangle in this whole thing, because we're just sinking, and everything else is just invading on both sides.
So when you met with the applicant, did you discuss this window issue?
I did, and I think that he said that he was going to try to make some changes.
Have you had a chance to look at the drawings that we're looking at to see if anything has been addressed?
I did, but I don't remember them right now.
Okay.
From... I'm not looking at them at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Wagner, for your comments. Our next speaker is Perry Hariri.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Perry Hariri, property owner at 16386 Hilo Road. We are two houses south of the applicant's property. We purchased this property two years ago. My wife and I have three kids that attend Los Gatos schools, two at... My wife and I have three kids that attend Los Gatos schools, two at Fisher and one at Blossom Hill. We've been residents here for over 10 years, and this is our opportunity to build a house on our lot, which is, again, two houses down. I'm here to support Mr. Jalalian's application. We've witnessed his whole process. He has conducted three DRC hearings. He's met with all the immediate neighbors, I believe every single neighbor, with the exception of the Wagners, support his application. And he's gone through extensive lengths to meet their concerns. He's reduced the height, he's reduced the square footage. I think the issue here isn't whether the cellar policy or the design guidelines are applicable. The issue is, is he conforming with the design guidelines? The DRC determined that he is. You're going to change the design guidelines? You can do that later. The issue today is, is he doing that? Just as far as the neighborhood character is concerned, Hilo Road has nine two-story homes. The one next to it is a two-story home. The design guidelines say that you can consider the home adjacent to it immediate neighbor, even though it's in the county. As Mr. Paulson said, otherwise, nothing would be considered an immediate neighbor in a lot of areas. Almost every single new home on Hilo Road is a two-story home. Almost every single one, with the exception of one. Two-story homes, there's a reason people do them. It preserves a lot more open space. It preserves a rear yard for people to enjoy their backyard. You double the square footage, kids don't have, you can't put a pool in, kids don't have a yard to play in, and it doesn't really substantially reduce the height anyway. It's, so I'm here in support of it. The appellant here is in the county, three houses down. They're not considered an immediate neighbor. 30 seconds. The house next to the appellant is far larger, taller. It's 4,200 square feet, and the houses two in front of her are also two-story. So she's fully aware that this character is changing in the neighborhood. Also, the average square footage on that street is 3,700. This is 3,500. It's below the average square footage on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Jean Dreger.
Hi, I'm Jeanie Dreger, 16359 Shady View Lane, Los Gatos. I've been there for 43 years. I am not in support of this, even though they're saying all the immediate neighbors. I am directly behind this proposed house. And my concern is the basement. We do have, like the Wagners, we do have movement. I have a brand-new, well, it's three-years-old patio toward the back of my property, which not only has cracked, and he has seen it, it has further cracked since he has seen it. It has risen in some area and dropped in others. And this is because of the drought. Our house, it also has, have movement. The doors don't shut correctly, and this is all new to the house. And I have noticed over the 43 years that when we have water years, the house is more stable and the patio is, was fine. But not since the drought has the, have we noticed it as much as we have now. So I would like to see if he has a cellar to have it smaller, like the White's House at 16350. Have a smaller, have it, have a cellar, you know, like they do. They entertain in their cellar. They, it has wine. They have had parties in that cellar. It doesn't have to be that large. And so I am, I am a resident next to that house, and I don't approve of it.
Commissioner Erickson has a question for you, if you're done speaking. Okay, Commissioner Erickson.
So have you done any geological research or had any geological analysis done that the size of the cellar that they would build would have any relationship to the movement of soil or to your property?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whitney Holliday.
Thank you for allowing me to, this opportunity to speak. So my name's Whitney Holliday. I live at 16400 Hilo. I'm here with my husband, Jason, and we are 100% in support of the project that, on Hilo, as well as, we heard more about the Hariri house as well. We are 100% in support of that house as well. We live just three, three houses down and next door to the Hariri house. We've looked very closely at the design. We feel that the proposed two-story home is very compatible in style and size with many of the other homes on Hilo, as well as all around close neighbor, other neighborhoods nearby. There are many homes that are two-stories on Shady View. There are many new developments, and there are more to come that will be two-story homes, and we're in full support of these. So we do understand that the DRC already approved this project, and there were a number of discussions, and the final conclusion was that it conformed to everything that the builder needed to do to build this beautiful home. So we definitely are in support. It would be a real shame to not approve a project like this that would beautify our street and with so much positive feedback from all the neighbors that exist directly across and next door to this home. It would be an absolute shame. So we're in support and really hope that tonight you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holliday. Tony Jeans.
Tony Jeans, BO Box 1518, Los Gatos, California. I was going to come here to listen, because I thought this would be an interesting property, because it's got a county issue, county pocket, it's got cellars, it's got two stories and one stories. I just want to make a couple of comments. I use cellars in part to stabilize houses, stop them moving around. When you do a full cellar with a structural mat slab at the bottom, it will actually help when you get changing droughts versus wet versus drought versus wet, which makes the earth move around. When you get down to a stable area underneath, it really does stabilize the house. So a cellar can be very useful from a structural standpoint. Obviously, the builder has to make sure that they waterproof it effectively, because if you do get underground water, you have a potential problem. You've got to deal with that. But that's their problem, not really your problem. The next point, I'm going to try and make it a little easier for you, I think. The cellar policy, like it or not, basically says it is not counted in the FAR, because the FAR is designed to make you look at bulk, scale, and mass of a house, and whether or not something that big belongs in the neighborhood. And whether there's an underground component is not relevant. Now, that's what the policy says. Now, the policy you may or may not like, you can say, "Well, that means that you can have more people in the house," et cetera, et cetera. But that is not really the point. The point is, if you're driving through Los Gatos beautiful, Los Gatos neighborhoods, is the house going to stick out like a sore thumb because it's too big? And the cellar policy is designed to allow people to put some extra space in there and not have it clutter up and block the neighborhood views and neighboring views. So mass and bulk, I think, and the size of the house and the compatibility becomes what you should be considering. And I think that should be tempered with the fact that DRC has considered it three times and has ultimately approved it, which gives it considerable amount of weight, because the staff in Los Gatos is probably one of the best staffs around, and they do a lot of work before they make a decision. Thank you.
Mr. Hudes.
Thank you. I appreciate your perspective as an architect. I wondered if you're involved in this project? Are you involved in this or another project in the immediate neighborhood?
No.
Thank you.
No, I'm just, I do projects in the county. I do projects that I have to make a decision, just like the architect did here. Do I try to change this as a one-story house and add on sufficient so that it doesn't get incorporated into the town of Los Gatos? Do I, if I decide that the owner needs a bigger house to satisfy their needs, then do I do it as a one-story or a two-story based on compatibility with the neighborhood? But I'm doing nothing in this neighborhood. This was just of pure interest to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. Appreciate your input on the cellar policy. All right, I have four speaker cards remaining, and it's not clear to me if they're part of the applicant's team. So Lori Vitale, Scott Urban, Mike Brown, and Craig Ford. If any of you are members of the public and not the team, please come forward. Seeing none. Do we have somebody coming forward that's not a member of the team? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Scott Urban, and we live at 16561 Inglewood Avenue. First and foremost, I wanted to commend all of you. I've never, my house is new on Inglewood, but I, I just wrote a check. I never was involved with the inner workings and I was imagining what it would be like with empty seats up here and developers could just grab a hammer and do whatever they want. So I congratulate you. So I'm a neighbor to the house Valley built on Littlefield. It sold at the end of last year. And as far as I can tell, it's very comparable to the home that's going to be built here at Hilo. And I guess he considers himself very lucky, because none of us objected, you know, on Maestro on Inglewood or Littlefield, Marchmont or Topping. And I've got to say, I mean, I'm here because he was the greatest contractor. We just really got to know him well. It was a two-year process. He took down the old house, built the new house. A few of us had concerns about some of the redwood trees, and he hired an arborist, and just every step of the way, he was just a, just a top-notch guy. He built this house, and, you know, one thing I, it's important for these two-story homes is I do agree, it's our new lifestyle, but as long as they fit in aesthetically, then, you know, I think most of us are very happy. And we are all, my family and all the neighbors, I haven't heard a single complaint. And that, I want to emphasize too, the family that moved in, we love them. They, they took the household for like 4 million or whatever, and to them, I think it was kind of a drop in the bucket, and they just wanted to raise a family in Los Gatos where their children could walk to Fisher and walk to Los Gatos High. And they love it, you know, and they've, we see them every morning, we walk together, and they've just been good, and it's really, it's the same home. So I just, as a neighbor, I'm, I'm in support. I know Hilo is two streets over, but, you know, I recommend, I think, well, you, I feel sorry for a bit, because I think the lady who spoke against Valley, I think you're the next bull.
Please face the commission, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just, I think, you know, sometimes you may have a neighbor who just is intent on, you know, crumbling in an idea, and I think the neighbor is going against Valley ultimately to go after this last speaker you had, who's building the home next door to the lady who's opposing Valley. I think you just take that all into account. I just, again, I want to emphasize, we love the house that looks like, it's the same home that's going to be built on Hilo. We're very happy. We love the new neighbors. Oh, also the cellar that is in the house on Littlefield, the new owners that first dismissed it. And to them, that's just been a huge blessing for them. The children love it. They have, you know, their friends over, and again, I just wanted to support Valley and just come as a neighbor.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. All right, we have no further questions. So at this time, I will invite the applicant, oh, we have another speaker card. All right, I'm now calling Jim Fox.
Hi, my name is Jim Fox. I'm real nervous, I'm not good at this. I live at 16344 Shady View Lane, Los Gatos. I'm here in support of my neighbors who are against the project. I can barely see the house from my house, but I can see it. As far as that, it doesn't directly affect me. But if you go down Shady View Lane, you'll notice on the left-hand side, mine's the last single-story house. So I have this huge monstrosity next to me, and the neighbors are wonderful, but my wife is, you know, looks at the windows and stuff, and we just had another huge monstrosity go to the left as us just in, and the windows look right into our yard. So we have basically no privacy when we go into the backyard. So we have to consider, we're going to put a building up there. They're planning to put a tree up there, but the tree's going to come into our house, our yard, about 40 feet, the tree that they originally planned. So we knock that out. So I'll have to put a trellis up or something like that if I want privacy in our backyard. My biggest concern is we have some neighbors that are uncomfortable with it. I wish the neighbors could come up with a alternative that the builders could do, because I've been to the meetings of, with both, both parties, and they think the place is too big and, but haven't really been given any guidelines as far as what would be acceptable to them. The underground basement, I'm a little bit concerned about that. I'm not an expert on this. I just basically go use common sense. It's like putting a boulder in a river, because the water flows from the south to the north. So when it rains, yes, the homes get flooded. And if you don't have good drainage, they have planned for good drainage. They have, I believe it's what it was called, Dutch drain or French drain into the backyard. It's very large, but you still have a boulder there. And normally what happens when you have a boulder is it rises a bit and it goes around. Well, the neighbor just to the south of them is going to get their water table raised up. And when we viewed the property, and we went there with the architect and the builder, I think it was the builder, the water level was pretty high. I mean, it was like within four feet. He was saying it was growing and stuff, but it seemed to be, could be a flooding problem. But anyhow, I just wanted to show that there are neighbors that aren't, aren't for the project, and I'm directly affected by a large, as the realtor calls them, McMansions right next door. My neighbors are great, but we didn't realize it was going to be the monstrosities that they turned out.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Commissioner Birch has a question for you.
I was just curious if the home built next to you is that accounting property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But better at county or city, we're all neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
All right, the applicant and their team are now invited to address the commission for 10 minutes. Five minutes. You did, okay, five minutes. It's a typo.
Thank you, commissioners. I want to address briefly the three objections to this project. Ms. Wagner talked about the cellar and how that makes it, quote-unquote, "one of the bigger houses on the block." I echo the comments of Mr. Hariri. This is not the time or place to debate whether the policy is correct. The simple issue before the planning commission and this appeal is whether or not this meets the guidelines, and it clearly does. And I think just from a practical standpoint, this is completely underground. So why would anyone care about square footage, whether it's a wine cellar or a living space, if it's entirely underground? And the guidelines and rules indicate that cellars are not included as part of the square footage. Finally, the cellar area has been significantly reduced from the original proposal. The second objector, I didn't catch her name, but her primary concern was this water level issue, and that was also the concern of the third objector. And I draw the planning commission's attention to exhibit number 12, which is the applicant's And I draw the planning commission's attention to exhibit number 12, which is the applicant's geotechnical engineering report. And that report was done on this specific issue. And the speakers admitted that they weren't experts in this area, and the expert rendered an opinion that if this cellar is constructed properly, and it certainly will be, because there's going to be liability concerns by the developer, then it's going to have no impact whatsoever on that issue. And I echo the architect's comment that cellars are often used to stabilize a home, and so I think it's a positive in a number of respects. My final comment is this issue of the McMansions coming into town, I think people can't have their cake and eat it too. By that, I mean, they can't want the fair market value appreciation of their homes due to these, quote unquote, McMansions that come into town, and simultaneously want to object to them. It just doesn't make any sense to me. In other words, if they're given a simple choice, do you want a neighborhood of 1,000 square foot, single-story homes that have a fair market value of $1 million versus having the entire tide risen for everybody, for every nice two-story home with or without a cellar that is built? Property taxes are going to go up, which is good for the town, and each neighbor is going to have a material appreciation of their personal residence. That can't be lost. On that basis, I recommend and request that the appeal be denied and the specific findings be affirmed by the planning commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Is your geotechnical consultant here?
I don't, no, I don't believe so.
Okay. Because I'm hearing conflicting information. I'm hearing from multiple people say that the water table is around five feet, and I think I heard numbers in that approximation from three people. And this report says that it was more like 14 feet. However, it sounds like this is a follow-up to an original geotechnical report that we don't have a copy of, dated February 3rd.
Well, we have the, we have one geotechnical, which is a soils, or known as a soils report. We also have, all right, we may have an addenda to that. But the water table is at 14 feet, the basement goes down 10 feet, and it's completely waterproofed. Any water traveling north or southeast or west would not bump up against the side of the basement and be diverted onto a neighbor's property, which I think that was the issue they were raising.
So then to confirm, you do have a French drain going around the, basically it looks like the water gets diverted at the very front of the home, back to the back, and there you're going to have bioswell, a shallow gravel basin, it says.
Correct, yes.
From the front of the property, C2, drawing C2. From the front of the property to the street, it looks that you're just diverting the water based on slope to the street drainage. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then there's also an overflow. If, if the neighbors behind us were concerned that if it really rained, that no water would flow on their property, so we've designed it so that if everything else, if the water gets too high, it will go out to the street.
Now where is that shown? I don't see that on the, on C2 at all. That was going to be one of my questions, that if we get a deluge of rain...
Thereby, we're, up the, up, on that drawing, it'd be the upper-left corner swale, overland
Okay. How would you get the water from the very back of the property to the street, though? How are you diverting it in that way? I don't see any piping.
It's overflow, overland. It's not a part of a piping system.
Okay. So the land is going to be sloped where if the water...
Of course, the land is always higher than the street.
Yeah, I know. Okay. It would help if you would have had your geotechnical consultant here, because it does sound like the water is an issue for the adjacent neighbors. Can I ask one other question?
Of course.
On a different note, typically with projects, we get a materials board. Did you provide a material board so we could see?
Well, we provide an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven material board, but I was, I'm sorry, I didn't know that we were going, that we had to do a large size.
Okay. The chair is in possession of a sheet with the materials, even though it's not the board that we can actually touch and feel, but I'll be passing this to the commissioners.
It's simple tans and browns.
Okay. I have some other questions, but I'm going to let my other commissioners speak first.
All right, Commissioner Hudes?
I believe that one of the neighbors who spoke raised issues about visibility into their bathroom. Is this an issue that you're aware of, and have you addressed it?
Yes, we have. On the floor plans and on the elevations, you'll see that all the second-floor windows on the right and left-hand side of the second floor, of the building, right, are five feet from the floors. In other words, from the floor to the top, to the bottom of the window is five feet, which is about there, and then they go up two feet more. We always do this on this type of house. We're 20-foot from the property line. What's unusual about this case is that we had shown 10 trees on the right side between us and the neighbor, and she requested that we remove them and have no trees at all. So now, privacies, we can put those trees back if you'd like.
Further questions?
Can I elaborate on that one point, on the privacy of the bathroom? If you take a look at the staff report on page six, it clearly indicates that at the June 7, 2016 DRC hearing, only the Wagners spoke at the hearing. The Wagners commented that there had been positive improvements to the project, that they prefer no trees along the northern property line, and that the construction should be carefully monitored. So those were the complaints that were voiced, all of which were acquiesced by the developer.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Birch? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Hudes.
Counselor, does that mean something happened to those windows over the bathroom? Because it didn't say that exactly.
No, no, the, I, the bathroom windows, all of our side windows on the side yards are no more, are no less than five feet from the floor. So in other words, someone can't look down into their property.
Okay, this says some of the issues were addressed, but people tonight...
That bathroom issue is the first we've heard tonight.
We've already addressed that. That was a concern that brought up by the architect. And we implemented the change, so we raised that up so that the privacy is maintained. So that's specifically addressed, and we brought that up in the DRC meeting, and they were satisfied.
Sir, may I ask who you are?
Sorry about that. I'm the owner of the property here.
So, okay, you're...
Ali Jalolian.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Birch?
I'm going to ask a policy-type question, then. Because the neighbor brought this up when she had her opportunity to speak, and they're saying it's been addressed, do we have any way that we could get a confirmation from the neighbor that she has seen this and feels that this addresses her privacy issue? Can we call her back up?
If the chair so...
I think she, I think she had stated when she was at the podium that she saw the plans, but she can't recall whether or not they were raised. The fact is, the applicant raised the sills to five feet. That was on both sides of that, not just the Wagners, but on the other side as well, in an attempt to address the privacy concerns.
Okay. All right, so back to the policy. It would be inappropriate to reopen the public comment, then? Is that what I'm hearing from the town attorney? Would you like to weigh in?
You have closed it, but if it's up to the, it's always up to the commission whether they want to try, want to reopen a public hearing or not.
Commissioner Birch, would you like the Ms. Wagner to step up to the podium? I can reopen it if you feel it necessary.
I don't want to be a pain, but I would, because this has come up oftentimes recently with the homes, and it's, it's been something people are quite concerned about. So I want to make sure that she feels satisfied before we start weighing in on this.
And I, I would, I would close your questions to your applicant before you call her back up. If there's any other questions?
All right. Any further questions for the applicant while we have him at the podium? Seeing none, thank you very much. And Commissioner Birch, you're not being a pain with your request. I'm going to reopen the public portion of the hearing and call Ms. Wagner back to the
Apparently, we have not seen the revised plans. We were just told they were dealt with regarding the windows. I checked with my husband, he says we have not seen the revised plans. So I don't know about the window. I saw the original plans, I was not happy with them. When I had the people putting up the story poles, they were looking right into my window. And the reason that I didn't want the trees is because of the type of trees they were putting up, and we had serious sewer problems with the tree roots getting into our sewer, and it cost $10,000 to put in a new lateral. So we have already over there a redwood tree, an olive tree, three butterfly bushes, three crape myrtles, and a Japanese maple. I have plenty of trees over there. So I don't want any more tree roots.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Hudes?
Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Help me recollect, there was a lady named Jeannie?
Yes.
Who I think has left?
She's left.
She also had a privacy issue, which, but I can't figure out why. If you're on one side of the house, where's her house?
Her house is behind us, behind his house. I don't, I don't exactly remember what it was that she had said.
I heard two privacy issues, I just wanted to show you.
Yeah, I think there was, and I, I think it was because of the two-story into her backyard and...
Thank you.
She was at 16359 Shady View, if anybody could use that in context? Okay, any further questions for Ms. Wagner, Commissioner Hudes?
Yes, thank you. I know you haven't reviewed the plans that have been submitted. Do you have an opinion about the solution that's been suggested to raise the window height to five feet to prevent some of the privacy issues?
That would be a good suggestion if I could visualize it, but I can't visualize it right here.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. We are going to take a 10-minute break. When we come back, we will be inviting the appellant to the podium for five minutes to add any further comments, but for now, we are going to take a 10-minute break. Before we invite the appellant back up, I'm going to allow the applicant back to the podium so that he can respond briefly to Ms. Wagner's comments.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wagner made two complaints, the privacy issue, which we've addressed in the form of the windows, five feet from ground level, and she admits she hasn't seen the plans, but rest assured, he did make that change to accommodate her. The second issue had to do with the water level, and there was a complete soils report from day one, and then pursuant to the Wagner's request, there was the supplemental report, which is exhibit number 12 to the staff report. So competent, qualified, licensed professionals have indicated that this cellar is going to be completely waterproof, and if constructed properly, which it will, it'll have zero impact to the neighbor's property and no issue relating to the water level. The cracking in the patios of the Wagner's property and presumably some other neighbors is that the construction is 40 to 50 years old, and there are no pumps involved, and there's no modern drainage, and this house is going to have all of those bells and whistles. So there's going to be zero impact as far as the water level to the Wagner's home. Thank you.
Thank you. The appellant is invited back to the podium for five minutes to add any further comments.
Hi, I really didn't think I was going to have to discuss my, anything like an agenda that I supposedly have, which I do not, accused of by an attorney that does not know me and I've never met, knows nothing about me, just about the outside of my house, or discussing other applications. Because I was just talking about this application, and my, my agenda is that I care about this town, I care about this valley. I'm a fifth-generation Californian, fifth-generation Bay Area, born and raised in Palo Alto. My grandmother is here in Los Gatos. And despite the findings of the staff that it complies with some of our guidelines, I believe that there are still issues with this project. And in my initial appeal, I stated that the cellar policy for the town of Los Gatos, per the general plan, states that cellars are to be encouraged in lieu of visible mass, not in addition to. So this cellar has been reduced to 1,800 square feet, which is, that's, that's a good idea, but that is still larger than 14 homes on Hilo, or in the immediate neighborhood, excuse me, that are less than 1,800 square feet. So they have a cellar that's larger than that, and they have the visible mass. And it is blocking views, not mine, but neighbors. So that, that's about the only comment I have, other than the rest of the issues I brought up in the PowerPoint. I think with 3,400 square feet above grade, a 900-square-foot garage, which is almost as large as what was demolished, and an 1,800-square-foot, just let's add that up, 4,351 hundred square feet of living and garage space, which is pretty considerably large. So I would just ask that you consider some other options, which would be to remove the cellar, since it's adding, it's in addition to the bulk of mass, or reduce the size of the project, perhaps, again, bringing it to a single level like other homes, maybe using the basement there, if the basement is going to be so amazing. Having lived in this neighborhood for 14 years, originally, they were creek beds that ran from the mountains, which some people may not know that are new to it. So there's underground streams, there's high-water tables throughout the neighborhood. So that is an issue, and if they've resolved that, that's great. I would say, have something built that conforms to the neighborhood and the immediate neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Susick. Don't go away. Vice Chair Kane has a question for you.
Yes.
You may have just covered it, but I'd like you to succinctly answer only this question. Why did you file the appeal?
I felt that it did not conform to the neighborhood. And I have neighbors down the street, a couple that have left, that it was impacting their views and their, their living space. Now that one of them had, said that she has issues with the basement, not with the two-stories. So I just thought that in, in this case, and I also requested this of the town, that when we're going to scrape houses, whether it's in the county or the town, I don't think it should go through the DRC. That's like a hu, that's, it's basically like a small, little, new, you know, it's a single-family residence, but it's a new development. So that's, that was, that was my main issue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. The public portion of the hearing is now closed. Do commissioners have any questions, comments, or a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just have some comments, because I do want to hear what everybody's got to say. To me, this would be fairly simple, but for the house, which is immediately next door, which is two stories, because clearly it doesn't fit the two, two, and five, except unless one considers the two-story house, which is in the county. I think the staff is correct in saying you kind of have to consider it. But I would say this, my experience with what the county has allowed to be built arguably in this town is horrendous. They put in big monstrosities, and they don't seem to care about it at all. So I, while I'm willing to accept that one has to take into consideration, I personally would give it less consideration that were I, one, have the, this town making that decision, and two, am I agreeing with it. I believe that this house is out of proportion to the neighborhood. The neighborhood has defined close, close, yeah. It is not helpful to me to take... It is not helpful to me to take 30 houses and figure out what percentage are two stories and more, or more. Walk down that street, look at this house, left of the house, which is hidden behind all the trees, these are one-story houses. I don't have a problem with the cellar. Somebody wants to revise the cellar policy, it's probably a good idea, but that's not my problem with this house. My problem with this house is it's, its bulk scale and mass is not consistent with the neighborhood as we define neighborhood. So I throw that out because that's a rather simple approach to this problem, and I don't know whether it's too simple. So I look forward to some comments.
I agree with you, Commissioner O'Donnell. I feel that when you look at all the square footage combined, even with the cellar that we're not supposed to count, but there's still going to be usage of that cellar and the garage, you have 6,000 square feet of home. So when I look at the general plan land use policies that also is used in conjunction with the residential design guidelines, it does talk about intensity and neighborhood character. So I'm looking at the intensification of the use, even though we don't count the cellar, the 1,800-square-foot at the far, it still is an intensification within the neighborhood that doesn't seem compatible with the immediate homes in the neighborhood. So those are my concerns. I share them with you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Birch?
I won't repeat everything you guys just said, but I agree. And I was also thinking, if this was just a new application, if we didn't assume DRC had seen it, I know I personally, we typically get quite a bit higher detailed drawings, including material boards and things, and I'm not as comfortable approving an architectural application without the type of detail we normally get as our full applications that come in front of us. I'm also still concerned about the water. Too many neighbors have said the same thing, and while I understand the French drain and the bioswelle, the whole runoff doesn't really work. I wish that they would have had their consultant here so I could ask some better questions.
Commissioner Hanson?
I wanted to add on a comment. There was so many comments made during the hearing about this and that house that was not in the way that we define neighborhood, and we, the planning commission, have to base our decision based on our residential design guidelines, which are very, very clear, that immediate neighborhood is the two houses on either side and the five houses across the street. We can't consider any other houses in the neighborhood. And so I did the math on the existing houses minus the proposals that are, the two proposals that are on the table of the 2-2-5 houses, and I did it in terms of an average, but the average square footage of those nine houses is 2,200 square feet. And so clearly, a house that's going to have, as Mary said, 6,000 square feet, even though we don't count the cellar policy, isn't in keeping with the, the nature of the immediate neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Vice Chair Kane?
To the degree it matters, much has been made of the DRC three meetings, and the reason, I think the reason they had three meetings was that the first meeting, points were brought up that needed to be ameliorated. The party said, let's go work on that. Much the same happened at the second meeting. Some things had been ameliorated, and the party said, let's work on it further. In the third meeting, the same thing. Just for the heck of it, at those meetings, unlike your dedicated planning commissioner, commissioners, there was a great variance of attendance at that meeting, with the exception of the community development director. I don't know if the continuity flavor was picked up, that the neighbors were rather very concerned about this. And secondly, counsel for the applicant correctly pointed out that the consulting architect for the town, Larry Cannon, made a number of points that he was concerned about, and that the applicant had addressed those concerns, I think pretty specifically concerns two and three. Concern one, it was suggested that we reduced one foot of height in the ceiling and addressed the town architect's concerns. But this is what I read when I read it the first time. Larry Cannon says, "The house may seem a bit large for the immediate neighborhood." Now, that coming from Mr. Cannon is pretty strong, because he's usually really less direct. "The only two-story house in the immediate neighborhood is the one immediately adjacent to the north. All other nearby houses are relatively small, one stories." You know, Larry's picked up the same thing that we're picking up, that this seems a bit out of place in its, in its mass and scale and intensity. I'm agreeing with what I've heard so far, and adding that, to some degree, I think the town architect agrees with this as well.
Any further comments from commissioners? Would anyone like to entertain a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll attempt, I'll make a motion. I would move that we grant the appeal and remand the application to DRC. What directions for revision is based upon what we've just said, which is basically, it shouldn't be a two-story house, it is too big. And so that would be grant the appeal and deny the architecture. Oh, I see. The alternative would be the first, which is sending it to DRC. The fourth would be grant the appeal and deny the architecture and site application. That's the one, that's the motion that I'm, I'm making. Grant the appeal and deny the architecture and site application.
Does your motion include sending it back to the DRC? It wasn't clear to me.
It's or, so it would not include it. In other words, you have a selection here of things you can do.
Got it, okay, all right.
Is to send it back. I don't, I wouldn't be opposed to sending it back, but based on what we've said today, sending it back doesn't seem to be very helpful. So my motion is not to send it back, but is to grant the appeal and deny the architecture and site application.
With that, I would second the motion. Further discussion from commissioners? Commissioner Hudes?
I'm a bit conflicted on this, because I, you know, I'm trying to apply the immediate neighborhood rule, and with an adjacent house on a similar-sized lot that is two-story, I'm having a hard time seeing this as, you know, a true exception to the neighborhood. When I, when I read the language about the neighborhood compatibility, I read some things about trying to recognize that you're in a neighborhood of single-family houses, and that's kind of where I'm coming down on this. I'm leaning toward supporting the motion, because I, I think that there have not been significant design elements in the house to make it compatible with the single-family homes that are adjacent to it, you know, including an attempt to maybe create a situation with the large amount of vegetation that is in the next-door home. And if, if, in my mind, if it were doing more to try to blend into the single-family nature of the adjacent homes, even if it were two-story, I would be more likely to support a development of a two-story home there. So that's kind of where my thinking is right now.
Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Hanson?
Well, to supplement those remarks, Commissioner Hudes, someone in writing or otherwise referred me to page 11 of the residential design guidelines, and there's a lot in this that would support some of our views and allow for some flexibility on others. But in the general design principles on page 11, introduction, chapter one, the following principles have been used in the development of the guidelines, will be used, the town, will be used by the town to evaluate plans and designs. The second one says, "Designed to blend into the neighborhood rather than stand out." And I think there's an issue with that. And the other was, that I picked, was relate a structure's size and bulk to those in the immediate neighborhood, which goes to Commissioner Hanson's summing up and dividing by five. I think we can find support in the residential design guidelines for Commissioner O'Donnell's motion.
Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to comment that I, I thought the, the appellant's suggestions and recommendations had a couple different ways to approach the problem. I don't necessarily feel like it can't possibly be a two-story house, but I think to bring it in character of the neighborhood, there's a couple of options, one of, one of which could be to remove the cellar and keep the house as is, or it could be to, to reduce, get rid of the second story and keep the cellar. There are some ways to accomplish this thing, but I, just in terms of the motion that was made, I don't necessarily agree that it can't possibly be a two-story. That's one way to, to have the problem.
Commissioner O'Donnell, followed by Vice Chair Kane?
I made the motion the way I did, simply because I believe that it is a creeping kind of problem. If you put two stories there and put an Amazon forest around it, you're going to have one more two-story in the neighborhood. We've got a house just down the block, which is story-poled at the moment. They just feed on one another. If you want to change the whole neighborhood, go ahead. Start doing them one at a time, and you'll change the neighborhood. If, on the other hand, you think there's room still in Los Gatos for single-story homes, and you find a neighborhood, as we define it, which is basically single-family homes, I don't think getting rid of the cellar is going to make the house compatible with the neighborhood, because you don't look at the cellar. So not discouraging the vote, but I want to make it clear where I'm coming from, and I've seen this now for a long time. We take neighborhoods that used to be one-way, we totally change them, and I've been doing this for 15 years, I guess, and those neighborhoods, you don't recognize anymore. But it starts with this, and maybe that's what ought to happen. But then you talk to people who say, gee whiz, why did Los Gatos change? Why is it all these big houses? Those aren't the people that own the big houses, mind you. But I'd feel that this house, because it is a two-story and a large two-story house, is not compatible with the neighborhood. That's the basis of my motion. But if somebody can support it for another reason, I wouldn't discourage that vote.
Commissioner Hanson?
I think your point was well-taken. I think that the, your motion is going to be denied, based on the compatibility with the neighborhood and the residential design guidelines, so I don't necessarily, I can definitely support the motion because of that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Vice Chair Kane?
I just heard some references to two stories might be acceptable, and maybe that's true, but I want to make it clear that using the 2-2-5, we've got, what, nine potential houses, one of which is a two-story. That's not going to compel me to support a two-story. I'd like to preserve the neighborhood, and I would defer to wiser counsel, but to supplement Commissioner O'Donnell's remarks, I'm going to try to do more to preserve neighborhoods than maybe I or we have done before. And that neighborhood has nine potential houses. Every one of them is a single, small house, except for the guy next door. That doesn't compel me to look forward and approve a two-story in the future.
All right, any further discussion before I call the question? Seeing no one, I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes six to one with Commissioner Erickson opposed. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are, thank you, Chair Burdami. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you. And Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have a matter to bring to the attention of the commission? Vice Chair Kane?
Just the obvious, and Commissioner Hanson brought it up, and Mr. Paulson said the item is being worked on, but just for the record, we really need guidance on the cellar policy. We've had authors of the cellar policy stand at the podium and tell us what it means, and, you know, they're no longer on the commission. So I'd like to know if council wants us to go in that direction or a different direction. I know their plate is full, but it would be helpful if we get that guidance.
Understood.
All right, commissioners, thank you very much for your time this evening. Staff, thank you. Members of the audience that are leaving, thank you for your participation this evening. This meeting is adjourned.